We begin our meeting with our invocation from Pastor Leonard Himes, who will also lead us in our pledge of allegiance. If I could get everyone to stand, please.
Good evening, let's pray. Our Father, we, Lord, are thankful for this, another opportunity to come together. And tonight, as we assemble for the purpose of governing, we ask you would meet with us in this place. That everything that is presented, Lord, would put Thee first, and for the well-being of our community. And we ask you tonight to bless those serving even now, that labor once again in this vineyard. Bless our county, our leadership. And, Lord, we'll thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
I'd like to call our meeting to order. Commissioners Price and Lewis are not present. They had previous commitments due to the rescheduling of tonight's meeting. The following planning and zoning items were advertised for a public hearing but have been removed by the applicant. RZ-22-25, public hearing has been canceled. RZ-23-13, public hearing canceled. And RZ-23-14, public hearing has been canceled. So if there's anyone here for those particular items, we will not... These items will be rescheduled and re-advertised for another date and time. Stephanie, do we have some appointments, appointment announced to be announced tonight?
The facilities appointment has been removed for tonight. The additional appointments are to be made as listed.
Okay, thank you. Recognition and proclamation honoring Locust Grove Mayor Robert Price. Nicholas, if you would please come forward and read the proclamation. Is the Price family here? Okay. When Nick finished reading the proclamation, we'd like to ask the Price family, City of Locust Grove Council, and City Manager to come forth for a picture with the board.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Henry County Community. I have a proclamation for you honoring Locust Grove Mayor Robert Price. And he reads, whereas Locust Grove Mayor Robert S. Price was born in Thomaston, Georgia on April 16th, 1944, to loving parents Clarence Stillwell and Louis Scarborough Price, and moved to Locust Grove where he was an active resident, a family man, and a servant leader. And whereas Mr. Price served faithfully in the United States Military and was a veteran of the National Guard, after which he embarked on a long and successful career, retiring from Bell South Telephone Company. And whereas, on February 9th, 1972, Price married the love of his life Barbara, and together the couple raised one son, Wayman. As a devoted husband and father, Mr. Price enjoyed farming, raising cattle, and was a mason for 59 years. He was also a man of great faith and is an active member of Grace Baptist Church. And whereas, as a natural-born leader, Robert Price loved the city of Locust Grove and all of its residents. Considered a true Southern gentleman, he was a kind and compassionate man who never met a stranger and was always quick to help anyone in need. And whereas, Mayor Price entered public life first serving on the Urban Redevelopment Agency from 2005 to 2006, before being elected to Locust Grove City Council in 2007. He served in that capacity for four years until being elected Mayor of the city in 2012, in a role he faithfully served until 2024. And whereas, during his tenure as Locust Grove Mayor, Mr. Price oversaw the growth and development of a once rural town into a multifaceted city to meet the needs of residents and its growth, making it a priority that the city and moreover Henry County continue to be a great place for residents to live. And whereas, Price departed from this life on March 15th, 2024, but his legacy of hard work, dedication, and service remains alive today. His impact will be forever felt by the lives he touched and those he served tirelessly every day. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners, Chair Carlotta Harrell, Commissioners Johnny Wilson, Neet Robinson, Dee Anglin, Michael Price, and Kevin J. Lewis extends his heartfelt gratitude to Mayor Price, Mayor Robert Price, for leaving a legacy of leadership and his unwavering commitment to the residents of Henry County, and offers his sincere condolences to the family and friends of Mayor Robert Price as well as the residents of Locust Grove, this day, 29th of May.
If we could have the Price family and... And Ms. Price, I just, I just want to say, you know, the legacy that Mayor Price leaves behind in Locust Grove will live on forever. He would always say, "I just love everybody." Every time that he would give a speech, "I just love everybody." He was a kind man, and we truly, truly miss him already. Thank you all for allowing him to serve this community that he loves so much.
Commissioners, also at this time, we have Ms. Sharon Daniels Mosley. Can you please come forward and make a very special presentation, please?
Madam Commissioner, other Commissioners, my Commissioner, and citizens of Henry County. My name, my name is Sharon Daniels Mosley. I'm the President of Southern Crescent Chapter of National Women of Achievement Incorporated. We are a service organization focused on being a community-conscious catalyst, impacting the status of women, empowering and equipping our youth to achieve excellence, encourage political awareness, help in senior citizens, and strive to improve the conditions of our community. Each year, we give ordinary citizens, known and unknown, a nomination for extraordinary acts that they do when they think no one is looking. These acts are not related to their job, but to their works, that which marks their good character. John Wooden said it best, "The true test of a person's character is what he or she does when no one is watching." Our 2024 recipient gift is that of service and giving. She wears it well. DeSandra says, "God has graced you, and you wear it well." When no one is watching, you give your finances to the least of them, making sure children don't go lacking throughout the year. When no one is watching, you serve these, those in your community whenever we call you, and I do call her. When no one is watching, you help make a way when a mother who can't. You are extraordinary. Southern Crescent Chapter of National Women of Achievement, 2024 recipient. We state, in recognition of your willingness to be more than ordinary, an ordinary human being, but extraordinary, we honor Chairwoman Carlotta Harrell. No, it's not real, Dad.
Wow, that's neat. Next item on the agenda, we'll ask the Director of our Henry County Library System to come forward or to share a, to share something with us. Ms. Kathy?
Thank you so much, Chair Harrell, Commissioners, and members of the public. I am really excited to be here tonight, because usually when I'm here is because I'm asking for something. I need something for the libraries, and I'm asking for funding for the community. And tonight, I get to give something back. In late 2022, the library system was eligible for a renovation grant for one of our buildings. And this was completely separate from the big capital outlay grant that we received to do the interior renovation of the McDonough Library. So I reached out to Hutch Purvis with Henry County Maintenance, Facilities Maintenance, and we put our heads together, and I said, "What's the most pressing issue for that building aside from the interior redesign?" And we decided that the, an upgrade to the HVAC system was the most critical need at that time. And luckily, or not luck, skill, Hutch already had quotes for that work. So we were able to very quickly put together that grant. I wrote the application, and Hutch and I co-signed the grant application together. The quote that we have was for $183,875, and we received the grant in the amount of $92,000, or half the cost of the project. So we have received three, the, the work is almost complete. We've received three invoices to date, and there are some more coming. But what I have for you tonight is a check for half of the invoiced amount to date in the amount of $50,972.71. Thank you. And it's just, I feel like it's just so important for us, for us to pursue those state dollars and to make the public aware that we're getting, you know, outside federal and state funding. This money came from the Georgia Legislature by way of Georgia Public Library Service, who is the grant administrator.
Awesome, awesome. So who get the check, Sharon?
We may be asking for a portion of that back here a little bit.
Well, y'all want to do a picture?
Madam Chair, I'm going to ask that our finance team join in the picture as well, because that's who will be the receiving party of those funds. Bernita and Ivy, if y'all can go and receive on behalf of Mr. Smith. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy. Next, we will ask Dr. Irvin Clark from Southern Crescent Technical College, the college president, to come forward to speak about a program that they have available this summer.
Good afternoon, good evening. Madam Chair, Commissioners, public, thank you for allowing me to come out today. Name is Dr. Irvin Clark. I'm the proud president at Southern Crescent Technical College. Been at the college since 2022, and absolutely am in love with the work that I do to help support our industry partners, particularly here in Henry County. I just want to thank you for allowing me to come out to talk today about this exciting program we have, our Henry County Discovery Series, which allows for us to be able to put the things that we do in the county, particularly robotics and automation. These are two industry sectors that are very important to Henry County with the number of the industry partners that we serve. We are blessed to have a number of assets at our college to be able to support these industry sectors. And specifically, this mobile lab that you see in front of you is an opportunity for us to be able to bring this to the community. And so at JP Mosley Park, which is located in Stockridge, we're going to run a boot camp for residents here in Henry County. This allow for us to be able to expose individuals from 15 years old all the way to 80 years old about robotics and automation careers in Henry County. We have companies like Lizotica, and we have new companies that are coming like Anderson that are looking for automation and robotics technicians. And this is a STEM career. This is STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. And being able to understand these career opportunities, the opportunities that exist at Southern Crescent Technical College. We have a campus here in Henry County in McDonough. Southern Crescent has over 3,000 students that we serve annually from Henry County that take classes at our Henry County campus as well as our other campuses here in our service area. This program that you see here is a free program that we're offering to Henry County residents. We have three dates, June 25th, June 26th, and June 27th. Again, it's free. Registration is available for anyone. We are already at near capacity. It's going to open up two or three more sections of it. So we encourage anybody who has interest in robotics, STEM, or just learning about Southern Crescent Technical College, because we are a state technical college, to please come out and participate in this boot camp. In addition to that, anybody who participates in this will also have their application for admissions to Southern Crescent Technical College waived, because we are committed to serving and supporting our community, our residents here, as well as these industry partners here in Henry County. In addition to that, if there are questions about it, they can reach out to our Executive Director for our Henry Campus, Candace Buckley. She's our new Executive Director. She's focused here in Henry County, so she works with Development Authority and other partners like the Chamber to help support our industry partners. I also want to take time, Madam Chair, to thank the Parks and Recreation Department here for the county for their support in helping to get this off the ground, as well as the Development Authority for their support in helping to get this off the ground. And I'll be open to answering any questions that you have, but we're really excited to be able to bring this opportunity to Henry County and STEM activity and STEM careers, and help students think about pathways to Southern Crescent Technical College and careers in Henry County with companies that need these individuals to come work and support these industries so that they can grow.
Absolutely. Does it, are there any questions from the board?
What's the minimum, like, earliest age?
15 years old.
15, perfect, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Did I see Josh Van here from the Development Authority? Josh, would you come and talk about how, tell us how this helped us with our industries that we have here? How important this is to keep businesses and provide the workforce necessary?
Be happy to, and good evening. This partnership is very critical. These are two of our strongest paying sectors. I think right now, we're seeing average wages just starting out in the upper 20s to low 30s. So for someone who is 18, they can go for dual enrollment for our school system at Southern Crescent and our Career Academy, starting in that certificate program. That's a great starting wage to build that career up. So our industries that we've been able to recruit, especially on the manufacturing side, which we've had that surge over the last four and a half years. A big reason for that is the Megatronics Lab at Southern Crescent. And I do want to commend Dr. Clark, since he's come in, has really accelerated that partnership in engaging with our industries to build those networks and pathways, not just with programs like this, but other partnerships to upscale current employees as well, too. So this is just a start, and also get outreach as well, too. We keep finding, a lot of people don't know we have this asset in Southern Crescent Campus in Henry County, over off of, I'm getting my highway mixed up. Lake Dow. 81, thank you. I about said 20. Thank you, long day. So right off Highway 81, I know you got some projects to help with the visibility, but part of this was to get more people from the north side of the county an opportunity to understand the asset and get engaged. So if you're looking for a career, Roblox is the way to go, because that is the future.
And if I could just say, Madam Chair, people who are underemployed, unemployed, career changers, they have children who are thinking about, what does STEM, would this STEM look like? This lab is going to give them an opportunity to touch our equipment, to see our robotics, to see our robots. We have a FANNIC robot in there. We have PLC machines, which stands for Programmical Logic Controllers, the electronics, the electrical systems that we have. They'll be able to see and touch that and understand what that means, and connect that with careers that exist in Henry County. Because we're going to be talking to them about employers in Henry County that need technicians, that need a workforce in these areas, and how they can build towards that opportunity going to Southern Crescent Technical College. And we have a fully operational Megatronics Lab on-site at our campus that they can take classes in. But it also extends to careers such as cybersecurity and automotive. So there's other career opportunities, too, that exist through STEM and automation and robotics that they can take advantage of at the college.
Can I have one other thing, too? Dr. Clark, y'all have a challenge sometimes with your students as they're getting into their final semester. Our companies are trying to hire them away before they graduate.
Yeah.
So, and then they're offering to pay and pick up anything that Hope and the other programs don't cover. So this is a really exciting field to get into if you're looking to make a change or get a pathway to a good start.
That's right. And we'll have financial aid advisors on-site, as well as our admissions team, to do instant admissions, as well as help students begin their financial aid process. So it'll be a one-stop shop for a student, for a potential student who has an interest, or someone who has an interest and wants to continue on to take classes. And every class that we offer in these programs can be offered in Henry County, so they can start and finish their degree in Henry County at a state technical college, which still be eligible for the Hope Career Grant, which pays 100% of tuition.
This is great. Thank you so much, Dr. Clark, for taking the time to come out to make this presentation. I look forward to it, and, you know, you have our full support.
Thank you so much. Is there a way I can get a photo with all of you?
Sure.
It'll be only good. Here, I'll take.
Next, next item on the, on the agenda is presentation, Home Investment Program Down payment assistance. Shannon, come forward. Our Director of Administrative and Constituent Services, Community Development. And Ms. Stacy?
Good evening, Madam, Madam Chair and members of the board. This evening, we do have a brief presentation in regards to our Home Investment Partnership Program. These funds are afforded to us by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. If you all recall, in July of 2023, the Board approved Resolution Number 23198. This resolution approved and accepted the CDBG funding as well as the home funds, and it approved the Annual Action Plan, which laid out how those funds would be utilized. As you may also recall, the county is new. We are a new recipient to the Home Investment Partnership Programs with 2023 being our first fiscal year to participate. As our first year, we are still learning that program and developing those part, those partnerships, as well as policies and procedures, working with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. As we are learning more, we are revealing more of what some of our limitations are, as well as some of the benefits to the program. On this evening, we'll be speaking directly to some of the limitations and things that we've learned on restrictions to the funding and concerns that staff has in how we have previously intended to utilize those dollars. For 2023, Henry County was awarded home funding in the amount of $539,724. The Board did accept an allocation or division of those funds, allocating specifically $300,000 to participating community housing development organizations, commonly known as CHODOs, as well as 100... as well as a hundred thousand for down payment assistance and eighty, approximately eighty-five thousand for tenant-based rental assistance. The balance being just under fifty-three thousand, being just under fifty-four thousand dollars was allocated for administration costs. As we've been preparing these policies and procedures and learning more about the program, we're learning specifically as it relates to our down payment assistance. I have Stacy here with me this evening to talk about some scenarios we've run on how we proceed with the down payment assistance. Again, we've previously awarded one hundred thousand for this purpose, for down payment assistance with the home funds. I'm going to ask that Stacy speaks to some of the scenarios and findings, which are putting limitations on the use of the dollars.
Hi. Good evening, Chair and Board of Commissioners. So home is heavily, heavily regulated. It starts with twenty-four CFR ninety-two. And they put out a, home puts out a publication that says how much, the maximum amount that you can sell a house to a low-income buyer. So the maximum amount that we can sell, sell a house, or that they can buy a house for is three hundred and four thousand dollars. That's an existing house that's already built. If they were looking to buy a new home that's just being built, the maximum amount of money that they can purchase a house for is three hundred and nineteen thousand. And that's, like I said, by a home publication. So I've ran three different scenarios using the market as it is right now. Since the maximum amount of a used house is three hundred and four thousand that they can purchase a house, I just started with an even number of three hundred thousand dollars. So if a low-income buyer, somebody that's between sixty and eighty percent AMI, wants to buy a house, it's three hundred thousand dollars. I have their closing cost up there, fifteen thousand. I've used a feasibility tool that they provided that calculates all the expenses and charges of purchasing a home. And using an interest rate that's seven point six percent, which is about average right now in this market, including MIP, because they will be charged MIP, taxes, insurance, their monthly payment would be two thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars for a low-income buyer, which means they have to have a monthly income of eight thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars just to get this type of loan, which is an annual income of a hundred and three thousand seventy-one dollars. If we give them twenty-five thousand dollars down and we're asking for them to put in a thousand-dollar contribution towards their down payment, we can spread it out, buyer's assistance for down payment assistance, closing cost, and they'll put five hundred dollars towards writing down the mortgage. That means the minimum income needed with our assistance is a hundred and two thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars for this household. At that rate, using the area medium income for Henry County, there is nobody that would qualify for a new house with twenty-five thousand dollars down payment assistance. So I tried another scenario. I lowered the price to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars and plugged in all the same numbers and still use the same interest rate. As you know, it's hard to find a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar house that doesn't need a lot of repairs. And we don't want to have them buy a house that needs a new roof or needs an air conditioning system. It needs to pass an inspection. And again, that's part of the regulation. So a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar house at seven point six interest rate, and we give them a down payment of twenty-five thousand. We might have a household of six or five persons that would qualify. And that's a maybe, depending on if they have reserve saved, three months' reserve, which is, you know, part of our policy, and if their debt-to-income ratio is within the percentage rate. So there's a lot of other things besides just their income that we take into consideration. And then I lowered it to two hundred and fifty thousand, and I'm giving them fifty thousand dollars down payment and plugged in a lower interest rate. Actually, I don't even know if you can get an interest rate of six point one right now. So their monthly income would have to be six thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars, which is seventy-four thousand nine hundred and one annual if unassisted. If with the assistance, they would have to make sixty-seven thousand one hundred and forty-five. And now we can sell a house to a four-person household that is sixty-two percent of area medium income. And that's the only one that totally qualifies. Again, a three- and two-person might qualify, depending on their reserves that they have in the bank and their debt-to-income ratio.
And then there's the probability of finding a home in Henry County for two hundred and fifty thousand. When we presented to you all the home program in 2023, we had anticipated down payment assistance of ten thousand dollars. That would allow us, with a hundred thousand dollars allocation, that would allow us to benefit ten households. From the examples that Stacy has presented, you see if we have, if we are up to fifty thousand, that is two hundred, that is two households that we would be able to assist. Now, for, what's also important to note, federal regulations require participants to have a home award of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We did not receive that. HUD does have exceptions to that rule, where if the formula calculates a lower amount for a jurisdiction, they can fill that gap, as I'm calling it, by contributing the remainder of those funds. Henry County did do that. We had some other funding available to utilize for that purpose. Even if we add that to that two hundred and ten thousand, to that one hundred thousand, that brings us to three-ten. At fifty to sixty thousand dollars, that is still limiting us to approximately six households that we can assist. Again, that is assuming that individuals can find a house at three hundred thousand or in best regards, two hundred and fifty thousand to acquire in today's market. Based on the scenarios run and understanding our current housing market, we find concern in households being able to purchase homes in the current market with the funding available to us to provide assistance. The purpose for this discussion is presentation only. We are not asking for you all to make any decisions at this point, but we did feel the need to bring this to you all's attention, understanding the importance and our desire to be able to provide assistance to our low-to-moderate households that are seeking homeownership opportunities. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. I would also like to bring to your attention that we do intend to bring the 2024 Annual Action Plan before you in a couple of weeks, next month, towards, I think, the second meeting of June, for which we will be proposing how we can utilize these funds if we're unable to carry on with the down payment assistance as projected at this time.
So Shannon, I just, okay, so basically, we don't have the housing stock to be able to really assist families with down payment assistance because of all of the regulations and requirements that HUD has.
It would be very challenging at this time, given the current housing market, for us to be able to provide assistance to the target market.
So, so can the funds be put in one of the other programs, such as housing rehab for seniors? Or some of the, what other, you have a slide that had the various programs that were, were up there, so you could do the...
Yes, ma'am, we definitely can. We can utilize those funds in other areas. As part of the regulations for this program, participation with CHODOs, the community housing development organizations, is a mandate. That is not funding that we can move to down payment assistance or anything else. We have to participate with CHODOs to some degree. So part of the recommendation that staff will be presenting in a few weeks is that we do move those dollars to be able to provide further assistance in our housing, to meeting our housing needs within the community. And we will still be to meet the national objective as far as our benefit to low-to-moderate income persons, but we will be seeking other ways to provide that level of assistance.
So when you said, so the CHODOs that do housing rehab, is that based on income? Is that based on seniors? What is that based on?
Yes. First, it would be based on income, but we could also provide stipulations as far as whether or not there will be a program specific to seniors or one specific to individuals with disabilities or other special needs.
Also, a CHODO developer can develop new affordable housing. That would help out our housing stock, too.
Thank you.
So could that be like a contribution to, if they decide to do a project here? Kind of like how we did the senior housing in Kellytown?
Yes. If an organization, they have to go through the process for qualifying as a CHODO. But yes, exactly.
Okay. Do we partner with any CHODOs currently right now?
That is one of the processes and procedures that we are developing, so we have not launched that application, but we are working on that currently.
And that is a requirement under the federal guidelines?
That is correct. Participation with CHODOs is mandated.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Wilson, did you have any questions? Okay, Commissioner, all right.
Thank you all.
All right. District, District Two, apartment to the Henry County Water Authority Board. Commissioner Robinson.
My appointment for the term to be effective immediately through December the thirty-first of 2024 would be Mr. Richard Sylvia Jr., and he was unable to make it from traveling, so he intended to be here, but of course, traffic.
Absolutely. So I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Let me get a second. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor. Motion carries. Next item is the Veterans Advisory Board Apartments for the BLC, for the Chair and District One. Commissioner Wilson. Okay. I'd like to call for a motion. Got a motion and a second. All in favor. Motion carries. My appointment would be Dr. Daryl Johnson. Is Dr. Johnson here? He would be my appointment, and I'd like to make a motion to approve. Motion and a second. All in favor. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is the Consent Agenda. If we could have our county manager, Sharon Matthews, to please come forward and read the Consent Agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair and members of the board. This is your Consent Agenda for Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, at six-thirty PM. Under the Department of Transportation, we have a resolution awarding a contract for quarry aggregate to Vulcan Materials as a unit-priced contract with no fixed quantities. This will be an annual contract for one year with two mutually agreed-upon annual renewals, and the funds are available in the DOT budget. We also have, under the Department of Transportation, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners awarding Sourcewell Contract Holder to West Pro JCB for the purchase of two JCB teleskids in the amount of two hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-four cents, utilizing eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and three cents from the FY 2024 Capital Equipment Budget and a budget transfer of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars from Henry County DOT FY 24 Budget to the Capital Fund. We also have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners awarding Sourcewell Contract Holder to West Pro JCB for the purchase of one JCB Pothold Pro in the amount of three hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars, utilizing funds from the Henry County DOT FY 2024 Budget to be transferred to the Capital Fund for this acquisition. Under the Facility Maintenance Department, we have a resolution awarding a contract to Garland DBS Inc., Omnia Partners Public Sector, U.S. Communities, via Innovative Roofing Corp. in the amount of one million, thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars for the replacement of the roof at the McDonough Library with a KEE-dash-stone FB-60 membrane roofing system. Under SPOSS, we have a resolution approving a contract for design bill services through Sourcewell EZIQC Contract for an equipment storage building at Heritage Park with Prime Contractors, Inc., in the amount of five hundred and two thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars, utilizing SPOSS four funds and district impact fees. Madam Chair, this ends the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. I get a motion. Is there any questions on the Consent Agenda, first of all? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Got a motion and a second. No discussion. All in favor. Motion carries. Now we move to our regular agenda, and we can have the county man, county attorney. Attorney Noel, please come forward. The resolution regarding RFQ for wrecker services on Interstate I-75.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. This is a resolution to award a contract pursuant to RFQ Number Twenty-four dash thirty-eight for wrecker services on I-75, and it's an annual contract. The RFQ was issued and only two proposals were received. One proposal was from Wrecker One, which is in McDonough, Georgia, and the other was from Corner Lot in Locust Grove. Wrecker One actually had the highest score, and their score was four hundred and forty-eight. Corner Lot had a score of three ninety-one and a half. So staff is recommending that the contract be awarded to Wrecker One as the primary vendor with Corner Lot serving as a secondary vendor in the event that Wrecker One is unable to perform. The contract will be for an annual term, and it'll have two renewals of one year each.
Any questions from the board?
So currently, we're using two wrecker services on I-75. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we're going to do away with two and hire one. Is that, is what this is about?
No, sir.
So we're not, we're not using two wrecker services on Highway I-75. We're only going to use one wrecker service on I-75. Correct?
That is correct.
Doing away with two and hiring one?
I'm sorry, sir.
We're doing away with two of them and hiring one. Correct?
Correct.
I do have another concern. The Board of Commissioners received a video, I'm assuming everyone received a video, about said wrecker service and this RP. And that video is concerning to me, why we would use that wrecker service with that news coverage of this wrecker service back in November, I believe, of twenty-three. That's all of my comments.
So I just want clarity. This is just for county contract. Other wrecker services that are under state contract will still be providing under state contract, which is the TRIP program. So that means that it is multiple wrecker services. So that means that it is multiple wrecker services under TRIP that will be providing services. So that does not discontinue?
That does not discontinue, Madam Chair.
So it is more than one wrecker service that will be providing service on the interstate?
But only one under a county contract?
Under, under, under annual contract for the county, and then Corner Lot will be a secondary if there's assistance is needed?
Correct.
Okay. And, you know, while we are on this subject, we've received several reports of theft from another wrecker service that we currently have under contract, that have numerous thefts report that, that our PD take reports from. So my question, too, would be why would that wrecker service still remain under contract when we're talking, if you are going to talk about, you know, what people are doing, this talk about them all? But at any rate, staff is recommending, this was put out, it was awarded to Wrecker, Wrecker One. I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second? I, I second, you second, okay. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Stephanie, do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Approval of minutes for March 25th through the 27th for the BLC Retreat in Columbus, Georgia, April 9th, 2024, regular BLC meeting minutes, and April 23rd, 2023, regular BLC meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Upcoming meetings and events on May 30th, at 5:30, special call, BLC meeting regarding the budget hearing and adoption. June 11th, 2024, second Tuesday of the month, at 9:00 AM, is our regular scheduled board meeting. June 25th, 2024, the fourth Tuesday of the month, at 6:30 PM, is a regular scheduled That takes care of everything that's on the agenda. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming out.